This conference will now be recorded.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our universal liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is.
I have a question. I would like to make a motion to table the agenda except for this session for lack of time to read and understand. That was seen on my back at Sunday night at six o'clock. One hundred and nineteen pages and then what the attorney sent us today, another hundred and nine pages. I have not had a time to fully understand and read, and I'm sorry for the people, auditors that are here. But to amend the agenda, an hour before, an hour after the meeting, we said that we were never going to do that again unless it was in the emergency. This is not the one. I'll make that motion.
Listen, I believe ninety or so of the pages were submitted about a week ago.
It doesn't matter how many pages you send. The matter is, this agenda is fat thick and to receive it on Sunday night at six o'clock. I had a full-time job and I rest through it. I got about halfway through it.
Mayor, if I could ask.
I think nine and ten forty-one this morning. I've got to agree with that. That's not what we're all down here. I've got to agree with county bishop. I like to vet people. I like to be informed a lot of what they want here and I haven't looked at any of this.
This session. Yeah, thank you. Number, uh, number three, item number three. There's a lot of material. That is set up that you're going to hear presentations, three to five minutes from each one of the terms that submitted a qualification statement, a proposal to be the city's audit. So I don't recommend that you table that there here and then they will describe in some detail exactly what it is. That's a discussion area. I have no action required. Should you not want to take that action tonight, you can table that. So next time, that would be the action item number four. There is a, a resolution twenty twenty-four thirteen on item number five. That's an annual reoccurring item that we pass without any discussion usually every year. So that's something that we're, we're used to. The executive session, the sub, it's a mandatory. Then the next piece, uh, there has been no agenda amendment at this point proposed. So that is the agenda. So you're going to hear two discussionary items and be apprised by your city attorney and consider a resolution that we annually. And the, uh, the action item on number four, you have the option of accepting it, rewarding that, uh, auditor, denying it or tabling the item and we have another meeting.
So we can at least hear the presentations and then if we want to report on item for three, we can hear presentations. If we want to report on item four, we can accept and I will table.
So mayor, you do have a motion and second, we move for discussion.
Um, I just, I want to know if I have the right way. Item number five, the gap waiver that we do every year. Is that something that could be people easily.
Special, yeah. We have time.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
No.
Adcox.
No.
Mayor.
Well, I'm upset about this. It's fat thick. We got it three days after we were supposed to. Just I want that to go on the record. I protest. I'm sorry to ruin your night.
I, I think it's important to be up in this field, um, to review the information. So we want to make sure everyone has uh, it's explained to be that. And so if there's individual items that we can table, then we can do that as we're, as we're being along to make sure. If you want to. I guess we don't have an open for consent agenda as it is now. Um, so if you want to address anything on consent agenda, which is just the minutes from last meeting and approval of the bills, then we need to do that now.
Make a motion to it for consent agenda, item one A and D.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
No.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
I know because I've been there a time before the bills. Ten forty-one on the day I forget.
Mayor, legal counsel's here. You may have a recommendation.
Yes, um, I appreciate it. We did submit ordinance number ten seventy-nine. Some aspects of this will probably come out later in the meeting, but we suggested that, uh, it be added to the agenda as number seven, if the council is willing to do that.
Just to clarify, if we have that as item seven, then item seven, it will just be eight and nine. And that won't be for approving the order. It's just a summary to hear about.
Uh, it, it does have, please ask possible action.
The possible action, okay.
How can I possibly get, do an action on this when I haven't even had a chance to read the document? I think the order of presentation is that legal counsel will talk you through it as a discussion item. And you have three choices, adopt it, deny it, or table it. Now, if you table it, we still have two weeks, uh, and we'll have another meeting and then you can, you can entertain the action piece of that. There's once again, either table it again, deny it, or accept and adopt that particular order.
So this would just be to hear about it and then we will have the option to accept, deny it, or cancel. So, um, we have a motion to add. I'm sorry, but can you tell me what the number is?
Ordinance ten seventy-nine.
And seventy-nine of item seven, do you remember? I have a motion to add ordinance ten seventy-nine. Seven, if you remember. We have a motion from Congressman Schreiber and second from Congressman Adcox for.
Bishop.
No.
Malat.
No.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mayor.
Do you have an amendment to agenda?
Item number two. Item number two is requested on this in the public. If we have a public fair, that's the comments with us this evening. Sure, I'm going to start with the agreement and address. You'll have three minutes to share any, um, comments with us. When that time's running down, I'll give you a quick signal to wrap up your presentation. And then, um, wanted to also remind if you, if you ask questions, we can respond from here right now. And so, um, if you stick around to the end, we can have staff follow up with legal or even, um, maybe respond to some of these questions or concerns at the end of the meeting. Do you have any public, if I want to do a statement? I guess I could shorten that. Okay, item number three is your presentations from the municipal auditing firms in consideration of selecting the city's auditor.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor counsel, I will yield for the mayor and call them in to order to present it in the, uh, uh, in the item memo. The expectation is three to five minutes with AT and Company start. Hi, just tell us your name, your, um, three to five minute presentation.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is April Williams. I am an audit principal at AT and O. Uh, we've been serving clients out of Arzica locations since nineteen thirteen. Uh, twenty twenty, I moved from to the home, kept the young family and opened the satellite office in Wichita in twenty-three months. And now our Wichita office is happening here today. Um, you know, our goal and everything that we do is to help our clients be better than they were when we started with them. So we're always introducing patients, starting with the role of persons. Um, people leave an unimperable experience with everything that we do, accountability and responsibility and always continually working on ourselves. Uh, you know, high concentration of audit clients in, uh, government sector, that's, um, really our expertise in auditing. We have forty-four professional staff and half of those are in our audit department. Uh, we have two, over two hundred audit clients in state, local governments, um, I oversee our regulatory basis audit, so the audit. Uh, we also specialize in single audit, so it'd be nice to be a single audit, which is one of our areas. Uh, we're open to, uh, committed and open an honest relationship with you guys. We like to hub, organize the communication and management throughout the year. Um, we actually really encourage management to call us if they have questions about terms, like, so that we can help answer those before the audit comes to them. We don't charge for any of those routine questions, um, anything like that. We're upfront about the target deadlines and target dates. Um, we're very strict about meeting those deadlines as our schedule and, um, showing you the government that you guys have for your, uh, I think that, and we will definitely report to that way to be able to. We do have several similar, um, audit clients here in your business area, the audit team of Soto and Conoco. Um, Dalton, Missouri, and Bazer, Kansas, and Mission, Kansas, for regulatory basis. We have several other regulatory basis school districts and cities throughout the state. Um, our main audit team, looking to serve myself as the principal. We have Stacy Leonard as the, um, IRR, who's been at higher level of, you know, everything is done. We like to have that to guarantee quality in everything we do. And then we have Trey Shelton as our engagement manager. Um, Stacy's been with Inglewood County for twenty-seven years, um, I'm about ten years in, and Trey's about five. Very experienced team. We also have two staff accountants to come out and, uh, perform a lot of that field work. Um, we like to have some of that start in December if we can, just to get some of the preliminary work out of the way and then make sure that everything goes smoothly with the audit process. Our P was included in the, in the overall, but I would love to answer any questions you guys have about our.
You're not required to ask any questions. If you ask questions, one you should, you should.
Ask a question. Um, so recently we learned that we are being fined by the IRS because of my judicial practices, um, through years that. How would the work team investigate to make sure that we are following my judicial practices, those were not flagged, those issues were not flagged on our reports? And so, um, can you elaborate on that sort of, what routine does to ensure?
Yeah, one of the things we do is, uh, we just, they came back and I was kind of a compliance checklist to make sure you guys weren't in compliance with the non-state statutes. And that's a big part of our audit. Um, I'm actually obviously my board of editors, who's, um, very familiar with that checklist and try to make sure that we were, you know, really informing our government. We were doing this actually that we might not be aware of. Obviously kind of a thing on what this situation might have been if it was payroll related. Um, that could be something that's hot, remember, you know, our internal people. We like to really make sure you guys have an established control system in place and make recommendations and exceed, um, areas that are lacking. Um, so it's really, you want it to be like kind of a team building and streaming, see that everybody up the car and, um, make sure it's smooth. So I think something like that would probably be hot with a compliance checklist and, uh, do that.
Uh, just an elaboration on the fees. There was an additional one major program.
Yeah, so if you have to have a single audit, you guys are small enough that I would guess that it would probably be because of one particular brand that you would even do that single audit. If, um, it would ever be the case that you have some second, uh, program needing auditing, then you would have an additional fee for that. I think it's probably very unlikely that you would have that just working at your bank. Um, but that is just kind of, uh, just in case.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Arning Associates.
Good evening, everyone. I'm April Sword. I'm one of the owners of Arning Associates and I lead the audit team. Um, our firm has been in existence since, uh, first sixty-five years and we have a really nice building on one W in Manhattan. Um, we specialize also in the K-Neg audits. Uh, we perform about a hundred K-Neg audits across the state of Kansas. Um, we do some nearby cities. We do the city of, uh, Edgerton, which is a small town, but they have a big, a lot of activity over there. Lots of cities in Kansas, suppose, Cowen, St. schools and libraries. Our audit process is basically we come out, meet with everyone, kind of go through processes, figure out who does what as the prior, uh, figure of entry control. Um, we perform a lot of our work remotely, so what will happen is we will get you set up in our firm three sixty, which is our online portal. That's where you will upload the things we request. That's where we communicate. We will do a lot of the field work in the office and then we will schedule at least one day to come out on site. And normally it's just one day to come out and do the things that would be done on site at the city. Um, we also encourage governing body and management to correspond with us throughout the year. Our fee is all inclusive. So you don't have to charge for that. We don't charge for travel or anything in the town. Um, on the single audit, um, we also do a lot of single audits or, you know, from guidance audits. And so we don't need one this year or need one this year, but it's only likely to might be one in the future coming up. Um, I want to answer the question you asked her about the IRS because I think sometimes as governing body members, which I was once six years at my small town. And I also went to the city for six years. Sometimes you think the auditor is going to catch everything. I mean, if they were not following their nine forty-ones, let's say they weren't following nine forty-ones correctly, or they weren't, they didn't do their ten ninety-nines correctly at the end of the year. I don't know what your penalty was for. There's no guarantee an auditor is going to catch that. Now, we are going to ask questions that may need us down that path, but the compliance checklist that she mentioned doesn't talk specifically about payroll. Um, it does talk about Kansas statutes that apply, but hopefully in the course of our conversation, sometimes what we do is we poll the nine forty-ones and we make sure the city reconciles their nine forty-ones to their general ledger payroll to make sure they're handling their papers correctly and they're not, um, taxing on things that they shouldn't be. Some things are pre-tax, some are, are after taxing. So we do look at those things. But there is a possibility that that would not have been caught by our firm either. Uh, now let's check back. If you did have something like this happen, our payroll department could help you resolve that problem. We can help you correspond with the IRS. We can help you work out the issue out in the back. Um, and generally there's no additional charging yet. You have access to all of our departments. So let's say we have another COVID, which I know we're not, but during COVID, there were a lot of changes to payroll. Uh, we had lots of questions from clients about how the nine forty-ones changed, how payroll changed. We are available to assist in that as well as part of our audit. Um, we are, we want to partner with you. We want to help you throughout the year. We want to help you answer the questions when you have them not after you've done it incorrectly for six or nine months. Um, we aren't looking to find things wrong, but we do want to help you through your processes and help you in any questions you might have. We may not have the answer, but we can normally find someone to can assist you with those questions of these. Any questions other than, from like I asked you? Do you do a separate charge for, like, one program or? So the way we quoted your fee was we would charge forty-five hundred for the single audit. We did not include an additional fee for an additional program. Um, again, we would expect, given only one program, generally for a city like ours, it's a sewer project, um, K-A-T loan, something like that, generally one program. The way the single audit works is when you're a, when you follow the regulatory basis, K-Neg, like you're going to do your GAAP exemption tonight, then you're considered regulatory basis. And so we have to test forty percent of your federal expenditure. So if we can grab one program, that, that equals forty percent of your total federal expenditure. Well, we appreciate you coming through.
Gordon CPA. Uh, what do, what do I, Adams Brown. How you doing?
Good, good. Oh, yes. My name's Alex Nady. I'm with Adams Brown. So I'm actually out of Army Hack Kansas office, but we do have other offices in Wichita, Oklahoma, or Great Bend, and all over western Kansas. We have over three hundred employees at the firm. Our auditing side is probably twenty or thirty and ten of those people specialize strictly in governmental audits. Uh, we do offer, just like the other two, um, we specialize in K-Neg audits and we have the ability to do the single audits as well. As you can see in that proposal, we did break the fee out just for the regular audit and we broke out the separate portion that would be if you guys are subject to a single audit. So you can see what that would have on there in those years. We do have over a hundred municipality clients. We have roughly sixty-eight of those being cities and then we do twenty-five to thirty single audits a year. We have quite a bit of experience in all those. We have various, uh, size clients. We have some of our bigger cities or junction cities, city of Atlanta and then we have very small ones out western Kansas as well. Think, uh, I think the proposal pretty much outlines everything. As to your guys' question about the IRS letters. Yeah, we can't guarantee we would catch those. I think there's payroll related. There's a decent chance we go with our payroll procedures. We can only try to look at your four quarterly nine forty-ones, tie those out to your W three at the end of the year as well as try to tie that out to your general ledger to make sure that it ties out there. If it's ten ninety-nines or something other payroll related or timing, we might not catch it, but again, we can help after the fact. We have a whole dedicated task team that does, uh, bookkeeping and payroll. They can also help with that stuff. We also have IT, uh, finance, uh, different departments like that. So we have pretty good knowledge everywhere if stuff does come up and, uh, kind of some of the other two, we do like to talk to you guys throughout the year. We have questions, I'm sure you guys get the stuff right when you're doing it rather than have to figure out how to correct it come audit time. So that just makes it easier for everybody, I think, so. You guys have any questions for me?
We feel for you as well.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Hey, you just pronounce it Peru.
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 You got it.
Hey, thank you. All right.
Excellent.
Hey, write it down. I'm writing one today.
Excellent. Appreciate, uh, having the opportunity to come speak with all of you. Uh, it is kind of interesting listening to other auditors come before. I don't know if I've ever experienced that. Let me just say this. We all do the same thing. It's all statutory based. It's all, here's how we do it. Uh, so there's not much to add to that, but let me just say this. The way that I do things, and I've done this for thirty-seven years now. I've done big cities, small cities. I've had cities that have been with me since the day I started with, was nineteen ninety-seven. That the first hour of a meeting is about, hey, how's the kids going? So we have good relationships with our clients, but one of the things that I try to emphasize going through a process of an audit. It's not just the audit. Hey, you get a bunch of numbers on a piece of paper. You have somebody that comes in and says, well, here's your audit. We all did the statutory guidelines. We all checked off our list. Great. Well, what did it tell you? How's your cash position? Do you think you have adequate cash position? Are you hitting benchmarks? Nobody knows. That's where we come in. And I don't know if you guys have an attachment of any of the, the style of presentations that I do. So when I'm done, not only do I give you the nice little statutory guidelines, but that could be trends. I want to know what your spending looks like over the last five years. Is your spending outpacing your tax revenues? What's your tax base look like? What's your concentration of your tax base? Do you have ten, if you will, properties that account for over ten percent of your property tax base? Because that could be the problem. Uh, in addition to all this, if you guys have a sewer, I do sewer rates. I involve heavily into drafting how-to-do utility studies. I do it all over the U.S. actually. And just a gentleman from Pennsylvania wanted me to do something for him. So I guess that's the way I look at it is when I come in to do an audit, it's not just about the numbers. Explaining the numbers is trying to help everyone here. I don't expect any of you to be experts in the area of finance or being able to analyze a financial statement to read all the footnotes. No way. So that's where I come in and I help explain it. And part of that is to making sure to tell you, do you have adequate cash positions? There's way to define it. How do you manage your cash? Have you taken advantage of all the opportunities that the state allows you to invest in to maximize your interest returns? How's your sewer fund? Is it hitting benchmarks or is it off? Is the sewer rates affordable? I mean, just some simple questions that when we get done, you guys will know a lot more. Now, let me also say I'm, I'm interested in your IRS thing because not to guarantee anything, but what gets me? The typical auditor answer. We're going to take nine forty-ones. We're going to total those up. We're going to reconcile back to the general ledger. Well, here's what was missing through all that. Where was the payments that went to the IRS? The EFTPS system, which is the backbone. And those get paid in where they paid in timely. That's compliance. And so that's the stuff that we do all the time for all the cities that we work with. Do about thirty of these a year all over the state. Well, I take that back. Used to do all over the state. Now that I'm older, I only go two hours out. Because I'm, I try all over. So, um, that's pretty much it. So.
Question, what?
But your fee schedule is part of, you have a platform that you do one on programs or have included.
I, I try to include all that because here's the way I look at the single audits. Normally, especially for you guys, unless you're doing something crazy, which I don't think you are. Most of it comes from rule development or the state of Kansas. That's pretty much your single audit requirement. There's nothing overly complicated about it. Quite honestly, from an audit perspective, auditors love those things because there's a lot of paperwork involved. I, you guys don't get a lot of value out of those. But that's why I don't, I'm not going to go overcharge of any of that stuff. So what you see is what you get.
I think there were a couple of, uh, numbers that maybe weren't, maybe were twenty, twenty-five to twenty-six.
Oh, I, yeah, usually I go three years and I keep it the same. I go three years exactly the same. Now, the only reason I would ever have a change and I'm thinking about this, I don't think I've ever seen this, but you would have to do something massive to change it, meaning that, okay, well, uh, we're going to take on something different. Annexes, I don't know, but normally, because in reality, what would be the difference if you're over here? You're not doing anything different.
So the same price for an year and then for a single audit?
Usually single audits, if we had to add that, I usually start at fifteen hundred dollars for those. Yep.
Yes, thank you. Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So unless, uh, anyone from Gordon is here.
Go on. I only saw that from staff, Sean Gordon, uh, he was originally three years, and here at the time, he was like that. And then we extended him two years, so he did five. But, we, we had an exceptional experience with him, you know, I took over until live. And, uh, he was very responsive, I just have lots of compliments for him. Not promoting him in the sense he's not here.
Maybe.
I would have said it, he was here too, he did a really good job, but it's a good practice. He did a different set of audits. He did a much better.
Since we've drawn on from the firm history, then I think that will conclude our, um, presentations for item number three. Um, for item number four, this is one that had a lot of the bulk of the package. So we have a couple of options on that, we can consider awarding the best member listed for the city auditing services, but on that, we can accept tonight, or we can table the item if, uh, those on council want some of them to be.
Hi, um, I think I have a couple, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So, themes that I'm not sure that council member will, well, some of this staff, I mean, time to review a lot of this, and after hearing the presentations. If somebody wants to review, maybe you'd like to leave back if they'd like to hear more, or have more questions after reviewing the presentation? Would that be, how, how would that look? I mean, if we just invited like two back out of the five?
As a part of the, if you're going to table it tonight, then have them come back for the reward, and then have them speak again, is that what you mean?
No, 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 no. Come back, just in case somebody has questions, without reviewing it, that you know, some people may not have had questions. I'm just asking.
I think that may be one of the things that we need to hurt if these people, and then.
Right, I was going to mention.
Re-watch that. And then have Frank go over the document.
And that way, in between now and next meeting, play the council member bishop and invite these two back, I, I read some material and I have some questions. I don't know.
It might be better to, and.
You're a red.
Correct me, I was going to say, if we have questions, let's email the city manager, and then, um, he can email out many questions, all of them from your cities.
Right, right. Because, because I do understand not being able to review, but, but I was able to review, but he gave a paper and I wanted to hear what I had to say, and I would like to review it, so we're, there's.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is everyone just is treated fairly and equally. And so, if you have questions, sending them to the city manager, allowing him to send them out to everyone, so everyone has the opportunity to respond.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
The challenge we're up against is that the format changed after we received the sealed bids, and after staff did what it's supposed to do, which includes making a recommendation. I don't know, for our background, but we made a recommendation. Now, it's like any other process, we somewhat stand by that as the best, best proposal that we received. However, that's been published, it's public, right? Uh, so, just keep that in mind.
It was, it was a change we could have requested. I feel like, um, especially in like, uh, things that have come about in the last few months, that we found out about, that it's so important that we take our government body audit very seriously. We have time to interview here from these auditors and ask questions, so we feel comfortable with who that is, since it's a city council audit. I didn't necessarily feel that we needed, uh, staff recognition, or to say, okay, staff says here's doing this audit, we need to do our due diligence and make sure that we're, um, in a city and, and making sure that we're fully.
I, I don't mind the transparency, but again, somewhat unfairness, they, they sent sealed bids, you ask the same question, that's why that's fair. Our council pointed out that we need to be consistent in what we ask, so if you do have another question. Now, typically what would happen is routinely, we, we bring these folks before you, more than likely, one will recommend it, as you can have that. And then you ask them questions. I think that would be, if they responded right, and it clarifies you up, we need to figure out to invite one of those, who, who you believe you're going to award the contract to. That's really the next piece. Uh, I don't know, is having them represent again as part of competition, if you will, I don't know what else to say. But if, if we can conclude in the next couple of weeks for the next meeting, you could invite the person back, and then you could ask further questions prior to the award.
I think if we look, might as well, everybody has time to look through it, read everything, and then if you have questions, you know, you could use, you could use nothing known, help everybody. And then, hopefully, within the next season, we'll be able to.
I, I agree, and my, my point was, when we get to two weeks from now, it should be the, maybe the one person coming in and making their presentation. As we could probably whittle it down to that level of some.
Or else just have the action in two weeks.
Yeah, exactly, madam, see them. Absolutely, that's a long thing.
Um, so, unless anyone has any questions or concerns about, I could just throw a motion to table, um, item number four, um, and respond if it's happening. And then the motion is reasonable, item number four.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Councilman Schreiber, second from Councilman Bishop, please follow up.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Item number five on the agenda is Considerate Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, requesting waiver from the preparation of annual statements and reports, and comments with the generally accepted.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council, we have before you the background, again, I stated previously that this is an annual, uh, occurrence for the city. Essentially, we want to audit on our cash bits, in other words, what we receive and what we expect cash. And so, this waiver is required if we, if we don't want to conform with GAAP. It's simple, saying all the words, in, in a sense that we need this waiver statutorily. GAAP is not applicable to us, just keep it simple. And, and so, we waive that, we're just, we're just auditing our cash, what we receive and what we expect, first.
This is similar to what we've done here with Asta.
Every year, every year, so, staff recommends that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen.
In any way, when we were being ordered by the IRS, was this part of it? Yeah.
Statutory of the state has nothing to do with our taxes.
We have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen. We have a motion from Councilman Schreiber, second from Councilman Adcox, will you please follow up?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes.
Mullen?
Mayor, I'm going to, just a quick correction, at the very bottom of that, it says twenty-four, uh, dash twelve, I'll have Sean call correct that. Oh, it is? Oh, good. You got the update?
Okay.
Okay, so good.
Um, item number six, Consideration, we have a new question, we have to say something about, because we need to see the situation of the city attorney. The consultation being privileged in the attorney client relationship. And, um, we'll make sure a lot more time, if you will.
I think about twenty minutes, is that too long? And the city manager, as well as the, uh, the government body.
We have a motion to return at six fifteen.
I have a motion to recess into executive session, returning at, oh, six. Six five.
No, no, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, I reminded, I missed it.
Oh, they haven't been fixed on.
Yeah.
We include the, the attorney.
And sitting here.
Sitting here.
Yes.
For the looking, is I can, that's sorry, Councilman Schreiber, motion, back from Councilman Adcox, will you please follow up?
Bishop? Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes.
Mullen?
This conference will now be recorded.
We have a motion to return to regular meeting, second. We have a motion from Councilman Schreiber, second from Councilman Adcox, will you please follow up?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes.
Mullen?
Item number seven, um, on the agenda this evening that was added is, I know, um, why I'm saying it's ordinance number ten seventy-nine, I don't have a, why did you tell us that, uh, staff and attorney?
Yeah, we'll turn it over to council.
Sure, yeah, this, um, I view as kind of a, just a good governance type of ordinance. Uh, the traffic study in this area is relatively old, and so, uh, this would allow us to, to get that, um, that traffic study updated, and have some conversations with, uh, neighboring cities, uh, just about the best way to do this, uh, this development. So, essentially, clarifies any confusion about, um, that, that people might have as to the traffic that, that can, uh, that can access this, this area of the road. I don't know, if you have anything to add on that?
I don't understand very much of the questions that I'm hearing, you know, any specific questions?
That would be, I think we'll have some questions, um, or especially as it's kind of a, a new ad for, kind of. Can you just describe a little bit as to why we voted this evening, and, um, how this would, uh, protect our residents' potential safety in the future infrastructure, that's what I think.
Yeah, I think the purpose is mostly to, you have a development going in there, and our, the city's biggest goal is to make sure that public safety, uh, and where this truck traffic is occurring is, uh, paramount. And this would give us time to refresh that, that traffic study, and make sure that we are doing the best study that we can for our residents in, in this area. Um, and, uh, just making sure that everything flows smoothly. Uh, we have taken those steps in the past, I think twenty eighteen, there was a study, but just taking the time to, to update that. Just like a good governance, uh, thing, to take another look at that, at that section.
And Mayor, all that, I think if you, when you go through the ordinance language, you see that there's, there's clearly a partnership detail with the city of Bottom Springs. Gives us a little more time that we can then start talks, we already have it in our local agreement, that we can ex, expound upon, uh, in, in that. One thing we want to do is ensure that the road is maintained properly, and not solely bear that burden, this is that opportunity, gives us some time to, uh, you know, just work that particular piece of it, and then it's reference in this particular.
And I think this development has just kind of been reinvigorated, I guess is the right way to say it, there was a pause in time. And so, with that reinvigoration of the development, um, it provides us an opportunity to make some assessments ourselves, just on the best way it is.
I know, um, well, council's contemplating, um, there's a lot to move, or especially with, uh, what's going on at North, there are a lot of questions and concerns. Um, and so, just as kind of a public information piece of this, um, I'll just let everyone know, like what, kind of what we're doing here. Previously, staff made many representations to developers and other municipalities outside of our public meetings. Since I've been the mayor, transparency, transparency has been a top priority for both myself and our administration. No more deals are being finalized, okay, the scenes, city business must occur within transparency and formality in public, as our residents expect. And that's, that's one thing that we're, we're trying to take care of tonight and explain as much as possible, um, out in public. We are in discussions with Bottom Springs about providing maintenance funding, and in discussion with the developer about creating a safe flow of traffic that will protect our residents and infrastructure. I am personally frustrated, along with many of our residents, on how this project has a role in affecting the community and neighbors. Our governing body and the administration are now working diligently to protect the safety and investments of our community. And this, um, is, is a time of, of the essence thing, and, and we needed so much early advice on that, but that's exactly what we're trying to do with this ordinance, is protect the safety and investment in our community, and this allows us to do that.
Is this, this ordinance still doesn't affect, uh, like, Anderson Dirt Works, and companies trying to get back and forth from their home?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's provisional, in, in the document, basically.
Anyone have any questions, or want to ask questions, or any discretion? If not, I'll turn it over to you, if there's ordinance number ten seventy-nine.
I will make that motion, please, ten seventy-nine.
We have a motion from Councilman Bishop, a second from Councilman Adcox, will you please follow up?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Item number seven, city manager.
Uh, Mayor, I have nothing, I did send you a few notes, uh, earlier today, via email, a lot of data on financial, I have several financial meetings, uh, meeting with, uh, construction management company, and a lot of that stuff, the software that we have invested in, I mean, could not be better. Getting to the year end, and the only thing I'd comment on that, I think that works in our favor, in what a reading call will come, uh, uh, after the term of the year, for our potential bond, so, bond issue. So I think there's, these things that we've done in the past, and include the software implementation, will have some positive.
Well, the court software allows to have a few, some appointments, um, for people coming into their reading mobile?
I don't know if I can specifically address that functionality, we will have, I know for a fact, more online remote opportunities to resolve a number of things. And, and so, that's what I'll say, that's going to be a while, we can do that simultaneously with our utility billing, which takes every bit of six months to install. So it's going to be a project, kind of paralleling our utility billing, and so, I'll be, have a better answer probably, hopefully by June of next year. But I'm hoping, it's fairly robust, uh, maybe you have some experience with it?
No, no, I mean, it's, I think it'll be better than what we have.
Yes.
Without a doubt.
That's not a review?
Yes, please.
Councilman Nolan? Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilman Mal?
No.
Councilman Schreiber?
Yes.
Complete meeting including?
Yes, ma'am.
How long has the city had that?
Um, they're, they're fairly new, they've been, they were the, they were the best handled, lowest bid on a couple of our, uh, air conditioning, heating, uh, items that needed to be replaced. And we have selected them, number one, they have some warranty work that they'll do for us, we could pay them all the product, and we've selected them to start servicing and inspecting all of our heating and cooling, uh, appliances, the, the air conditioning system, heating pool, and they are located, I believe in Shawnee.
Um.
They, when we go out for competitive bids, they were the lowest, the best bid, and essentially, they have to service most of our stuff anyways. Uh, they were, there were others locally that were not competitive at all. So, in a sense, continuity of service, what I mean is, if they have to work on this one over here, they can work on this one over here, they can completely call the same person every time. So they've been very competitive pricing, and they've been servicing, they found, uh, a condenser crack in a nineteen, uh, fifty-one-year-old unit down at the other end. Carbon monoxide was leaking into that, and we had to shut that down and re-replace it. It's thirteen thousand dollars, and I'll comment on that, and the renters owe twenty-five percent of that. If they choose not to, they can opt out of their lease, because it is the liquor store area that is, it's unacceptable, they have to turn it off. So the heating piece of that was dangerous, so we have to replace it.
I appreciate that, I mean, I like to keep the business local, you're a, but.
Absolutely.
Price is right, that's, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um, let me refresh my memory, so, the food truck ordinance that we passed, sir? Was that for a food truck to be sitting in place for three days in a row, and then they had to move?
Yes, ma'am, yep, we, and that published on November first.
That was effective from November?
Yes. Once, once you pass it, mayor signs it, it gets published, published, it's effective upon publication, and so, it is ineffective.
So they can move, and then come back to move the place?
Yes, but after three days, that's the end of it, then they have to come. Yes, but after three days, that's the end of it, then they have to come back the next time. We are. Locally, we do have, I mean, we do have public knowledge. We do have a vendor that has been at one place for quite some time, under the previous, did it right under the previous regulations. However, now, this is in effect, and so we've given them some notice. Uh, we did notice that the business license, the ownership, maybe has changed. And so there's a little confusion there, but we have given them notice and given them an opportunity to get out of there. And then, if they can go there three days, they can also come down where it's allowed, to another place for three days. Every time that occurs, they then have to pay the fifty dollars a day, and they have to secure a business license at the higher level.
Well, we appreciate that.
Yep.
Appreciate their willingness to take it.
It's really about...
It is about... Um... I should've wrote it down, so I can hold this. I don't know, I think that's a, that's on that.
Councilman Adcox? So, I will wind it up with the nuts thing for a whole night, we'll get out of here. I just wanted to do a quick little look again. We are cleaning things up, doing things differently. And we've got a food truck period that is looking out for the best interest of all residents. And, um, right. All we've got is that, but, um, we're looking out for our city and, um, the concerns that we've heard throughout the community that are our concerns as well. And we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're looking out for our residents. Um, I wanted to take a moment to thank our residents for the past five winters. We have new buildings coming soon to Youngtown, Ellisville, school recreate, and part of our city. We're going to be saving professional buildings for our workers' founders, for our city staff. We're gonna be bringing a library of superior lab resources to all residents that we've never had to do before. And so I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank our community for investing in ourselves. It's gonna be a game changer for our community. And so I wanted to certainly mention that. And then thank you to our volunteers and community, um, our staff as well for helping with their last Saturday's Ellisville Mobile Country event. Um, this one, we had fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six pounds of groceries that we were able to serve over six hundred and thirty-one people. And so, um, the residents coming through, community members, not everyone. We don't restrict it to just Ellisville, but a lot of the community that come through our community and along through our community. And so it's just, uh, it's been effort in cooperation with our city as well in meeting the people who are in our community. So I wanted to take an opportunity to thank everybody who's involved in that. Have a great weekend.